Head and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners' meeting for December 2nd of 2020. Do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting, and if you do address the board, please tell us your name and where you're from. And this meeting is being recorded via audio and video as well. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence from the two or three commissioners? Okay. Hearing none.
We got a nice letter from Macy Thomas regarding our support for shows in which she participated.
Fantastic. Okay. Approval of minutes previous meeting, November 18th of 2020?
Mr. Chairman, before we get into our meeting, could you identify the phone numbers?
Okay, we got a 541-971 ending in 55. Who is that one?
That is George Krebs, City of Pendleton.
Oh, hi, George. Thank you. Okay, also have a 541-09. I think that's Robert.
Yes, this is Robert.
Okay, 541 number ending in 70.
I'm Tom Roberts.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Tom. And I don't see any other phone numbers, but there's 13 people on the call. Can you see the, pull the list down?
That would be me to do that? That guy?
The participant, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the minutes of November 18th. Second?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to make sure I got all the phone numbers as all. Looks like I did. Okay. Okay, any additions to the agenda?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. Hearing none. Any public input or recognition of visitors? Okay. We'll go right into the business items. Item number one is a land use hearing, which is a public hearing, so I'm going to suspend our regular board meeting and go into the public hearing mode.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is John Schaefer. I'm the chairman of the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning the City of Pendleton's request for the county to co-adopt a proposed change to the city's urban growth boundary that would remove 69.2 acres of industrial farm land from within the UGB and replace it with 69.2 acres of land to be rezoned from exclusive farm use to city light industrial, or M1, and annexed into the city. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents, or physical evidence, please provide it to me or to the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Are there any questions?
Okay. Is...
Bob Walder's on.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is Bob Walder, you're on, if I'm not mistaken?
I am. So, I would start with staff report. Bob Walder, County Planning Director. The request before you is by the City of Pendleton, and they're requesting that the county co-adopt a proposed change to the city's urban growth boundary. As Commissioner Schaefer said, the proposed change would remove 69.2 acres of industrial land from within the UGB and replace it with 69.2 acres of land to be rezoned from exclusive farm use to city light industrial zone, or M1, and then that area would then be annexed into the city. The area that's being removed from the UGB would be given a county zoning designation of EFU, all under the jurisdiction of the county. The UGB adjustment is requested to support airport-related development of properties that are identified in the city's 2018 Airport Master Plan as an airfield development area. Specifically, the UGB adjustment will support the growing UAS, or drone industry, that desires land and hangars located nearer to existing airport runways. An initial hearing was held before the City of Pendleton Planning Commission on May 28th. The amendment was adopted by ordinance, which is included in your packet, ordinance 3960, during a Pendleton City Council meeting held July 7th of 2020. A copy of the adopted city ordinance is included in your packets. A hearing for co-adoption was held before the Umatilla County Planning Commission on October 22nd, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendment by the Board of Commissioners at their meeting today. The criteria for approval for amendments are found in Umatilla County Development Code 152750 through 152755, and the joint management agreement between the city and the county. Provisions for adjusting the UGB are contained in Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 660, Division 24, Section 70. Per the provisions of the JMA, the City of Pendleton is responsible for preparing and/or reviewing all legislative and quasi-judicial amendments to the city comprehensive plan, text, and maps. All adopted amendments to the city comprehensive plan and/or maps affecting the urban growth boundary shall be referred to the county for co-adoption. The county has the responsibility to review and adopt the amendments approved by the city for these to be applicable in the urban growth area. With that, I'll note that in your packets, I've included the county findings and conclusions, a copy of the city's ordinance 3960, the city planning staff report, and the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Also note, City Planner George Krebs is on the call today to be able to answer any questions and provide testimony. This amendment was also reviewed extensively by Department of Land Conservation and Development. Both the city and county worked closely with DLCD to review this and develop the findings, and DLCD has given their support for this action today. With that, are there any questions for staff?
I have a question primarily as to location of the maps that were in the kit, in the packet here. Did you identify to me which land was being removed from the UGB?
Yeah, if you go to page 10 of the city's staff report, there's a map that shows a green highlighted area and a red highlighted area. The red highlighted area is the area that is currently inside the urban growth boundary and is being removed, or is proposed to be removed, and the area just east of the airport runway that's shown in green is the area that's going to be added to the urban growth boundary. So it's an acre-for-acre swamp?
Yeah, I just heard that was coming out, and I hadn't been able to identify that. Thank you for pointing it out.
You bet.
Is there any current use on that that's being added, has been, and if you would be, it seems like that's awfully close to the area where some of the activity for the ordinance has been.
Yeah, so I'll let the city speak to that a little bit when they give their testimony, but it's my understanding that a portion of it is currently farmed, as dryland wheat ground, but there is a portion also that's almost, what, 69 acres that isn't being commercially farmed at this point, it's close to the airport runway.
Without being someone who really knows soil types and all of that really well, the land that's being re-zoned for UGB, does it have viable farming potential?
Not necessarily for growing cultivated crops. I believe a portion of it was under cultivation at one time, but it is suitable for grazing activities.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to call for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Okay. Hearing none, I want to articulate that the agenda identifies the applicable substantive criteria for evaluating the request. Staff will review the criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these criteria, and failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So, Bob, are you done with your piece?
Yes, I am. You can move into the testimony portion if you'd like.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, call for proponents. Applicant and/or representative and other proponents.
This is George Krebs, City Planner, City of Pendleton.
Hello, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Chamber, Board of Commissioners. The address here at the City Hall is 500 Seton West, in P. Avenue, as the breaking. And I would just like to add this a really brief summary and answer any questions that you may have. The proposed amendment will remove property owned by the City of Pendleton just south of Stagecoach Gold Road, the southwestern airport ownership line, and replace it with property owned by the City of Pendleton located to the east of Airport Taxiway Gold and north of Airport Runway A26. The property proposed is added under the Federal Aviation Administration Preview. The stated reason for the UGB amendment requested follows. To support airport-related development of properties that are identified in the city's 2018 Airport Master Plan as an airfield development area, specifically the city UAS or unmanned aircraft, airport industry is growing. However, this industry desires land and hangars located near the airport runway. Two sole changes will accompany the UGB amendment. The 69.2 acres of land to be removed from the UGB will be rezoned to the appropriate county zone, Misscage County Zone Exclusive Farming. The 69.2 acres of land to be added to the UGB for the growth boundary will be rezoned from County EFU to city zone airport activity, A.A., where there's that location. The new parcel will also be annexed into the city limit. Parcel of land is adjacent to the Pendleton current corporate city limit. With the other parcel of land, which is approximately 9.2 acres, the city water master plan identifies the need from deep waterline to the extended, fixed water flow capacity in an area. The urban block with three land swaps will include 6.2 acres, which is part of the 69.2 acres, of land for the extending of the waterline. The same acreage is identified in the wastewater master plan for extension of the sewer main month. The 6.2 acre section to south of Taxiway Gold below the Taxiway Echo, the triangular portion of Body Airport Road, then extending north wide enough to support the water main. The waterline extension will be installed alongside Taxiway Gold, existing airport improvement. The remaining 63 acres can be brought into the UGB while these attack vehicles, what is recognized as an economic opportunity land for unmanned aircraft industry and presently partially high drive farm. The other portion is used by the military for their joint exercises at the airport that regularly accrues up there about every other year. There's quite a few other old military vehicles out there right now, and this will be part of the expansion of the airport in accordance with the master plan. There are quite a few airport-related activities out there now. There's a weather station, and there's some other facilities, so it's probably being used for airport-related activities. There's a, we have received, city has received from the Economic Development Administration and the state-built UAS hangar and testing facility. The city has received approximately $17 million from the federal government to, for this expansion activities out there at the airport. The state has also committed loan funds and grant funds for hangar development. So, this is primarily for economic development for the city and the community. That concludes my summary. Before I sign off here, I want to thank Bob Walder and his staff, county staff, for helping us through this very difficult process. It's very lengthy, and we went through a lot of issues with the state, and we dealt those, and Bob was very helpful with all that, so I want to thank him.
Thank you for that. That's always good to hear. Okay, any other proponents of this application? Okay, hearing none. Any opponents? Any opponents for the, for this application? Okay, hearing no opponents. Call for comments from any of public agencies.
We haven't received any public comments from agencies, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Since there's no opposition, I don't see a need for any rebuttal. Is there any request for continuance to keep the record open? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, and then go back into our regular And we can deliberate on that hearing if need be, or I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the Plan Amendment P. 127-20, the zoning map amendment Z. 315-20, and co-adoption of the City of Pendleton Urban Growth Boundary Adjustment.
Second?
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for that.
Well, thank you.
Okay, aware board appointments. Did you want to do that? You want me to? Okay. So, terms of two of the members for the aware board are, including myself and Dwayne Thule, the mayor of Weston, on the Athena Weston Education and Enhancement Board, will be expiring. I have been the representative for the City of Athena. However, since I've moved to the City of Pendleton, I can no longer be the City of Athena's representative. It is proposed that I become the new county representative rather than Bob Walder, and the city requested that Bob Walder be its representative. The City of Weston Representative, Dwayne Thule, is recommended for reappointment to another term. So that's the motion in front of us now. Any questions on that?
I move for approval. Second?
Got a motion and a second. I'm going to abstain on that, but all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The election results. Is that Dan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Be able to deny with administrative services, and before you are the results for the election for the county, measures and candidates, and the county has to accept these results or any county candidates and measures. The two county positions were the county commissioner position three, which has Dan Doran with 15,060 votes, and Holly Jill Beers with 11,721 votes. Dan Doran was the winner there. The other candidate position was for sheriff, which Terry Rowan was unimposed, was for 24, had 24,302 votes, so accepting the results for that. And then finally, we have the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance, which passed with 18,967 yes votes, 11,604 votes. So we just need those results to be accepted by the county and the letter that is attached by the board chair.
Dan, with all the publicity that seems to accompany elections, many more recounts and certifications and so on, are not required our way to certify our county results for other elections other than just these three?
Well, the one thing is, the county has to accept their candidates and their measures, just like the city has to. They have to do the same thing, so that's what this is about. Now, when we talk about hand recounts, we just can finish up a hand recount because we are required to verify that our machine is counting correctly. So it is one of our ORSs out there that says after each election, the SOS department selects certain batches that we've had, randomly selects a batch, and then says you need to count for this race and this race, and verify that the machine is counting the same as the people. So we do a verification and recount. I think we had 1,500 or 1,800 ballots we counted, just to verify that the machine was counting correctly, and it did. So that's what we do on the hand recount. There's no measure that was close enough. It's a fifth of a percent of the, if it's closer than a fifth of a percent, then we got to go into the recount. No, but none of them were that, were that close. Now, I know it echo, but Dan, that's not what this is about right now, so.
I move we accept the election results. I'll throw as a chair to sign the letter. Second?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
And Dan, this is also you, creation of position for IT.
And I think Jennifer is on the line two here, but recently, we started marking on the new journey of replacing our financial system. I was originally on the, or managed the IT portion of the original acquisition of our system that we got back in 1999. We implemented the financial side in 99, and then the HR side in 2000, and started back in 98. This is a two-to-three-year commitment doing this work, because it's not just something you just wake up one day and you have new financials. And we have to do a staggered approach, too, where we bring in the, usually the accounts payable, then into the budget, and then the net, because our calendar years are different for HR, and our fiscal accounting is July 1st, and then our HR is January 1st. And so we stagger those. It's going to take us a couple of years. We just started the process. We promoted Riley back in July, Riley Orton, to be basically what I was 20 years ago, to manage this through, and then as this is implemented, to be the person that's in charge of this big huge project. But Riley has other duties, and he's not able to fulfill those duties if he's doing this work. And we're looking at this position as the takeover, his other duties, which was mainly running the, one of his biggest duties was taking care of the sheriff's office, jail, the multi, by county, multi-agency jurisdiction of the RIMS, the records management system, the dispatch system, which is very complicated, a big system. So we're bringing somebody aboard to do that, while Riley is implementing this next system over the next two to three years. And it just so happens Eric will be, Mr. Jensen, or another person I should say, in our office, will probably be retiring about the end of this, this venture. So this person would probably just move into that position, and then this position would go away at that time. Hopefully I explained that well enough for you, Commissioners.
Now Riley will still be available for when I need his help, right? Is that, is that still okay?
Well, hopefully we'll have another person just as, just as talented as you.
He's only available for his liaison. I might expand that one to the entire Board of Commissioners.
Since I've been involved in working with Jennifer, and Dan, and Riley, and the business office to implement this whole thing, I'll move for adoption.
Second?
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Server purchase. This looks like you, too.
So, in our master plan, or with IT, part of it is to replace the software and server for our records system, to upgrade our recording system, and their, the server is now seven years old, and we need to replace it. We've already had multiple failures, and it's hit to that point that we need to make sure we don't. It has all of our documents, images on it of all of our land transactions, so it's a very important server. And to replace that, we put in that plan, $15,000 for the replacement of the server. And the quote here is actually $14,989.69, so it's just right there at the $15,000 for a replacement server. So it is what we have had budgeted for that, and we actually have the money in 3513 ready to go in the capital out lie, capital line item, and I just need an approval to move forwards. The one thing is, is we're trying to do this at the end of the year, calendar year, because most of them are trying to beef up their fourth quarter profits, and in order to do that, they usually give us deep discounts on trying to sell whatever they had in the year, and so we get more bang for our buck by buying at this time of year.
Dan, I know that there's a great big room downstairs that holds all the, the county's IT system. How many servers are involved in that?
That's a secret, but there's quite a few there. Now, for security measures, I don't want to say, but we do have quite a few.
It sounds like a response I got from a doctor one time when he described the condition, and I said, "Well, what exactly is that?" And he says, "What it means is, we really don't know."
Well, we have several, and you're welcome, Commissioners, to come down, and we can give you a tour, but just for security purposes, I don't like to give a lot of things away of locations of, some of our assets are vulnerable to, to people that can watch these things on the internet.
Excellent. I can understand that. A lot of people might take a look at this and say, $15,000 for our servers, an awful lot of money. I only paid 2,500 for the top of the line computer I have at home. How does it differ?
Well, the servers, they're being, basically, we have over, close to 400 or 500 computers in the county, and they're all accessing this server. At one time, we're not, not everybody necessarily is, because it has different records on it, but our land transactions are accessed by port people, lots of people, versus your computer at home, and it's just you accessing it. So multiple people are accessing it at the same time, and this includes the public, because the title companies and different things need access to this information. And so, yeah, it's got to be a fast and responsive equipment. And so, yeah, it's gotta be a fast and responsive equipment with also redundancy. So if a hard drive dies, it can still continue to work. And then you can, we have what's called hot swap. So it actually has an extra hard drive in there. So if one of them dies, it brings this other one online and copies the data over to it. And then we get an email and lets us know that this one drive has died. And then Dale shows up with a new hard drive and puts it in there so that we can continue to be up. So there's a lot of things that differ between this and your home computer.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, this is literally turning into the Dan and I Show.
There we go. I think this is my last one. So, so we're getting there. The next is just a, with our elections department, it's a payable for maintenance on our ballot counting system. And it's budgeted every year. It's the exact same amount as it was last year. The total, five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars there and it's five hundred and seventy dollars over the limit. So it just requires Board approval, but it's a budgeted and yearly expense and part of the cost of doing elections.
Is it kind of interesting to me that we buy the ballot reader, is that right? Or is this include a lease of some kind from the manufacturer? We buy the equipment and then we pay to use it?
So, yes and, yes and no. So these, we have two ballot readers and they're around eighty thousand dollars apiece. And we got them both forward, twenty-five thousand, twelve thousand dollars each through. Because Lane County was buying a new system, so we worked to deal with them. And so we ended up saving hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. But in turn, it also has software. So when the ballot, the information comes out, we hook it up to a system that puts that in a readable format. It also allows us to verify the unclear marks at the same time. So this is the maintenance and the licensing for that software. And also, as they find maybe security issues or places they can improve on these ballot machines, they send us the updates to the counter, the, what you would call the hardware upgrades or iOS updates that you get on your phone, similar to that. So they'll send those things to us to the iOS updates. And so that's included in this maintenance. But we own the software. We can continue running it and using it without paying this. But we wouldn't be very secure and as new ORSs or federal mandates come in place, we wouldn't, the system wouldn't take in effect those changes. So we need to pay a maintenance in order for those things to be done.
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Number seven. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You too, Dan. Uncollectable taxes. Is that you?
Uh, I think Rachel was on.
Oh, is Rachel on the phone?
I am on the phone.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I believe what's in front of you, this is Rachel, Director of Assessment and Taxation. And we're looking at two properties to abate their taxes on. One is just a general, the manufactured home is no longer there. The second one is a fire that took place in two thousand nineteen. It was not reported to us nor was any paperwork turned in for the fire for that January one date of two thousand twenty. So they received the tax bill. They're asking for the, to be abated because the actual property owner created the fire that made the loss of the house. Typically, this would go off the tax rule as of January one, two thousand twenty-one that's coming up. If they wanted that tax abatement to happen last year before the tax payments came out, they had to file paperwork, which they did not. But they are asking for those taxes to be abated by, via their lawyer.
Okay.
Rachel, these are on rented properties, is that right? On rented lots?
Uh, one of them is on a rented lot, yes.
Were the lot owned? How was the, how was that treated? Is the real property still taxable and being paid taxes on it?
Yes.
I think the one-
Abate the taxes off the manufactured home.
Yes.
I think the one, they're both on rented properties because that one, that one is destroyed in the flood in Riverside.
Okay.
There's just no property to do anything with, Mr. Chair, I move adoption of order TX twenty twenty dash oh six.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, whoops, I just went out of it. What is next?
The next one is a request for authorization to purchase some portable signs for emergency management.
Ah, and Tom Roberts, I believe, is on the phone.
Yes, I am Commissioners.
Good morning.
So. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't see it. Are you, are you ready for me?
Yes. As ready as I'll ever be.
Okay. Alright, thanks. So Tom Roberts, Umatilla County Emergency Manager, out of the Sheriff's Office. I appreciate the opportunity to, to chat with you today briefly and discuss this proposal. Basically, in a nutshell, what it boils down to is several months back, I presented a proposal to the Board of Commissioners requesting the authorization to move forward with a state home and security grant application that was going to be a joint county application between Umatilla and Morro counties. The cost of that, or the, the initial application amount was for the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to be split between both counties for, for equipment. The state came back and, and said, "We will give you one hundred and five thousand or exactly one half of your request and you guys can, can proceed from there." The backbone of this proposal really is, in addition to just having this equipment for all hazards purposes, is mostly for in the event of a release from the Hensford site that impacts our, our northwest piece of the county up around Hermiston and Umatilla. So that if we had some sort of a radiological incident or if there was something that occurred that, that required some sort of an evacuation or things along those lines, we have this signage available to be able to direct people as to what's happening or what our needs are. But it, they are also available for other instances though, such as with our floods that occurred, if we needed to set up signage, which we did in a couple of key locations during the floods, to direct people as to the fact that there's flooding occurring or, or if there's evacuations and tell people turn right, turn left, things like that. Essentially, what we're asking for right now is the ability to purchase the electronic piece. We spoke with a company that has signs, they are a proprietary company in that they hold and are the sole manufacturer of most of the signage that we're requesting, which is a foldable, portable unit that has a, a stand option and/or can attach to the back of a vehicle. But it's rapidly deployable, will fit in the trunk of a car, but then it can be set up anywhere. So two of those would come to Umatilla County and then two also for Morro County. The, the larger and mid-range signs are on trailers. The largest of them would, is, is one that is built by a company called Wonco. And Wonco though has a agreement with the company that we're proposing to use, sole source purchased from, to place their cloud-based operating equipment into the Wonco sign when it's constructed so that all of these signs across the board can be operated from one operational platform. So for instance, we could pull up the operations platform in the Emergency Operations Center and change one or all the signs messaging right there remotely. We can do it from a patrol car, we can do it from dispatch, we can do it from my living room if we get into. So that's really the main backbone of the proprietary request. The total purchase would be for two large boards, for two of the smaller trailer boards and then for four total of the, of the portable, foldable ones that we can put in the backs of cars. Umatilla County would take the fiduciary lead and, and provide all the procurement and handle the requests for reimbursements and everything through the state. And then as soon as the equipment arrived, we would take Morro County's half over to them and sign ownership over to them and they would accept then their piece of the responsibility for the backside of the grant, which would be annual exercises and things like that. And then that would relieve us out of the hundred and five thousand, approximately five thousand, which I'll, I'll bring in a secondary presentation and request to you in the near future for, therefore, basically the construction south side, you see at construction zones, the, the orange triangular sides all in, in emergency management bright pink, which is kind of the, the national standard. I can, I'm, I'm looking at options for possibly having a sourcing of local vendor so we can keep as much of this flowing to our local businesses as possible.
Tom, let me stop you for just a second, Tom. Tom, let me stop you. Are you talking about the second, second one now or are we still on the first purchase, the item in front of us?
Just the one in front of you. Well, yeah, there's, there's two purchases. But the, the second one for five thousand I'll bring at a different time when I find a vendor locally, if there's one available. Right now, I'm talking about the hundred thousand specifically built for
Okay.
Electronic reader board piece of it. That's the one that we're wanting to sole source out to, to the company that, that we've been speaking with because they are the sole manufacturer of not only that folding board, but also they have the proprietary cloud-based interoperability component for the large boards as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a little difficulty following the money on this one. I thought I heard two hundred and some thousand at one point, then a state grant of a hundred thousand. Can we have that clarified as to what the obligation is? And will there be any expenditure requested from the general fund or is it totally grant covered?
Uh, it is one hundred percent grant covered. The initial request was for two hundred and ten thousand. The state came back and, and gave us half. So we have one hundred and five thousand total to expend. The request in front of you today is for the electronic reader boards at a cost of just a few, few dollars over one hundred thousand, all told, leaving us with five thousand, which I'll bring at a, a further, at, at an upcoming date when we get the remaining supplies.
And the intent is to share this equip with Morro County? Or will Morro County have equipment of its own? And is it going through a somewhere process of what we're doing here today?
No, we're, we're handling the fiduciary piece of the entire grant. So we are actually purchasing in bulk for both counties. Half of the equipment purchased will come to Umatilla County. The other half will go to Morro County and they will, they will take ownership of it.
Move approval of order BCC twenty twenty dash oh eight two.
Got a motion, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All, okay. Motion carries. No, I think he, he did say aye, right? Commissioner Murdock, you did vote in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you, you did kind of cut out right there, so. Okay, number nine, CARES Business Grant Program. Is Gail, is Gail on the phone? Yeah.
Yes, I'm here. Good morning. Gail Nelson, Equity Development, Green Middletown County.
Good morning.
Morning. So what we have in front of you is simply just the approval to spend up to the amount that we've been granted from the state in federal CARES Act dollars in this most recent round to help small businesses. And that amount is one million one hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And I have sent you, all of you separately, a couple of days ago, kind of our outline for the grant. We've had some more discussion on that. And we are still kind of working out the final details of the framework of, of kind of the criteria of the grant. But in general, we will disperse the money out across the county. Apparently, as, of that would be centered around distributing it by population across the county. And then the details will, still need to clarify a few points on. And, but we can do that, that will prove the general amount that we can spend up to through this grant process.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion.
What's the expectation for getting the application burned and out?
I was ready to put it online today, but because of some of the different kind of suggestions that were made yesterday, I don't feel comfortable putting it up today until we kind of work out those final details. But it can be done pretty quickly. I would say it could be up online on our website and, and taking applications tomorrow. And we will run the application window through the fifteenth of December. And then I will work with each city and review the applications for each of those zip codes, areas, and then get the information to finance so that they can get the checks, checks cut and net out. The idea is, the goal is to have those checks postmarked by December thirtieth.
Okay, is there a motion on that one? Okay. Got a motion?
Am I getting feedback or someone else speaking?
I was, I was talking, I thought you made the motion. I was asking for a second.
I'm just going, moving for approval of expenditure up to one point one eight three million dollars for grants to businesses within Umatilla County.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is a pers- Let me get, hit the back button here. Post-pers retirement employment. Is Jennifer on or?
Yes, sir, I am here.
Okay.
So this is her request. We currently have four full-time post-pers retirees. And this request would be to continue this into the two thousand twenty-one year, recognizing that these individuals are all at-will employees and are subject to the personal policy four point seven.
Commissioner Murdock, I think you're getting a phone call. Okay.
Jennifer, what's the process for, for you receiving those? Does it come from the employee making a request or the supervisor supporting the request?
Typically, I have seen them from the employee making the request. In one case, I are, I have already received the request and it also has the manager's signature on it.
But ultimately, it does require a manager's signature?
Yes, we would want support from those managers.
So we're approving this ahead of getting support from the manager? Written, a written letter of request or support from the manager?
I don't have official, I've had email correspondence with two of the other- I don't have official, I've had email correspondence with two of the other individuals and I don't yet have their letter, but I anticipate that it's coming. So in an effort to do them all together, they were coming for, before you today as a package?
I know, I guess I know the formality, Jennifer, but that, Dan, I'm uncomfortable granting something like this without the request and support of the, of the department head.
Sure, we can put this off until next meeting if you like.
Well, I, two of them I'm well aware of because I did do that myself for two of them because I'm the liaison. But, but I, I guess as a matter of protocol, the manager or director should be making the request to have these people continue to be employed.
Sure. I, I, I don't disagree at all. And I'm happy to have this kicked back till the next week.
Well, that's only my opinion. I'd like to hear from Bill and John. I certainly think it should have the endorsement of the department head prior to us making a decision.
I, I stand in agreement with that.
In this case, we're, it's an elected official that we're, we don't have for those, for two individuals.
Okay.
Do we have to do it as a package? Or typically approve the ones that you have the proper paperwork from?
Um, Doug, do you have an opinion on that?
Uh, yes, you can certainly approve what you're comfortable with doing.
Then I would move that we approve those for whom we have the appropriate documentation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, it is almost 10 o'clock. Why don't we go ahead and skip the commissioner reports today? And I'm gonna move straight to adjournment. Thank you very much, everybody.